Is it the be- at the front? How are you doing today? I think you are doing fabulous as well. So, for the swearing in for the promotion, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Anthony Peluso, having been appointed to the office of Deputy Police Chief, in the city of Rolling Meadows,
In the city of Rolling Meadows.
County of Cook,
County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all of the laws and regulations
And all of the laws and regulations
Of the city and the police department.
Of the city and the police department.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties
And I will faithfully perform the duties
Of a rolling Meadows
Of a rolling Meadows
Deputy Police Chief
Deputy Police Chief
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I don't know if we have any words from our Chief of Police, Chief John Noackey, to his Deputy Chief.
Hello, good evening everyone. Today is a huge day today. It's the biggest group of promotions we have had since I've been here in almost ten years. We have five promotions. We also have five new officers starting. I just want to say, like I said, I'm very proud of Tony. I'm very proud of all of you. And I also want to thank everybody's family that is here today because you all are part of the Rolling Meadows Police Family. Police officers, we have a very difficult job and we do need your support. You, like I said, you're part of our family. We miss a lot of birthdays, holidays, and like I said, we need your understanding, like I said, your support, to make sure we could do our job to the best of our ability. So it's great to see so many people here. It's really an honor. Like I said, today's our biggest group. And at that point, I know we have a lot of promotions and swearing in. So, it is a tradition we have, usually somebody very special to the person being promoted or sworn in today. They'll do a badge pinning. So Tony, who do you have with you today?
My wife Kristy's here.
You want to come on up?
And as the new Deputy Police Chief, Chief, Deputy Police Chief Peluso was being the leader here to break the ice as we go through our next promotion. John Manfredi?
Aye, John Manfredi. Having been appointed to the office of Police Commander. In the city of Rolling Meadows. County of Cook. Do hereby solemnly swear That I will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the State of Illinois. And all of the laws and regulations of the city And the police department. And I will faithfully perform the duties Of a rolling Meadows Police Commander. To the best of my ability. Thank you.
You want to call up, who you want to pin your badge?
Yes, with my wife, Angelique.
Come on up, don't be bashful. Have you been practicing?
Congratulations. Mr. Christopher Danner?
Aye, Christopher Danner. Having been appointed to the office of Police Sergeant. In the city of Rolling Meadows. County of Cook. Do hereby solemnly swear That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. And all of the laws and regulations of the city And the police department. And that I will faithfully perform the duties Of a rolling Meadows Police Sergeant. To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And who do we have here?
This is my wife Jackie and my daughter Ava's with her as well.
Will Max Taylor please approach?
Aye, Max Taylor. Having been appointed to the office of Police Sergeant. In the city of Rolling Meadows. County of Cook. Do hereby solemnly swear That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. And all of the laws and regulations of the city And the police department. And that I will faithfully perform the duties Of a rolling Meadows Police Sergeant. To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And who do you have here today?
This is my wife Andrea.
Not as easy as it looks, is it?
Maybe next time we'll get Velcro.
Mr. David Ellis?
Aye, David Ellis. Having been appointed to the office of Police Sergeant In the city of Rolling Meadows. County of Cook. Do hereby solemnly swear That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. And all of the laws and regulations of the city And the police department. And that I will faithfully perform the duties Of a rolling Meadows Police Sergeant. To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And who do you have here with you tonight?
My wife Heidi's in the back.
Come on up.
Thank you so much and congratulations to everyone on their promotions. Please, a round of applause. Thank you for your service to the city and your continued service. We look forward to everything that you will do in the future for the city, for your communities, and for the state of Illinois. At this time, we are now going to begin our swearing in of our new officers. Will Mr. Jose Camacho please approach?
Aye, Jose Camacho. Having been appointed to the office of Police Officer. In the city of Rolling Meadows. County of Cook. Do solemnly swear That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. And all of the laws and regulations of the city And the police department. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties Of a rolling Meadows Police Officer To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Jose is one of our newest officers. He's actually in the Police Academy right now and he grew up in Rolling Meadows. I believe your fam- trying to keep track of everybody. Obviously, there's a lot of new officers, but you did grow up in Rolling Meadows and your family is currently in Rolling Meadows, correct? And who are you calling up today?
My wife Kyla.
Mr. Robert, Ia Tomasi.
Aye, Robert, Ia Tomasi. Having been appointed to the office of Police Officer. In the city of Rolling Meadows. County of Cook. Do solemnly swear That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution Of the State of Illinois. And all of the laws And regulations. Of the city And the police department. And that I will faithfully discharge The duties of a rolling Meadows Police Officer. To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Robert's also in the academy right now. And who do you have with you here today?
My wife Ara.
How you like the Police Academy? Good.
Good answer. Somebody must have prepped them.
Mr. Michael Porters.
Aye, Michael Porters. Having been appointed to the office of Police Officer. In the city of Rolling Meadows. County of Cook. Do solemnly swear That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. And all of the laws and regulations of the city And the police department. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties Of a rolling Meadows Police Officer To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Michael. And who do you have with you tonight?
My wife Lisa.
Come on up. Michael is not in the Police Academy.
Congratulations. Mr. James Riverd or Rivard?
Aye, James Rivard. Having been appointed to the office of Police Officer. In the city of Rolling Meadows. County of Cook. Do solemnly swear That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. And all of the laws and regulations of the city And the police department. And I will faithfully discharge the duties Of a rolling Meadows Police Officer To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
He's going to bring up his wife Megan and your little one? Is she doing the pinning? She's got her phone, see? They start them out young now. They got an iPhone already.
Congratulations. Mr. Matthew Willis?
Aye, Matthew Willis. Having been appointed to the office of Police Officer. In the city of Rolling Meadows. County of Cook. Do solemnly swear That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. And all of the laws and regulations of the city And the police department. To the best of my ability.
That's on mine, sorry.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties Of a rolling Meadows Police Officer To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Amanda, become, come on up. Last but not least, you got anything to say? Since you're the last, we'll put a lot of pressure on you. It's been a great experience, hasn't it? It's been fantastic.
Happy to be here.
Congratulations. And thank you, everyone, again for being here today to welcome our new police officers as well as all of those who've received promotions. You are welcome to stay for our Committee of the Whole, but you are also free to leave at any time. And we have a reception for cake and coffee. So that sounds like the better option of the two. So please enjoy the reception. As always, you can stream the City Council and the Committee of the Whole meeting afterward. But we look forward to working with you. And the city, on behalf of the City Council and the residents, thank you for being here. All right, everyone. We are going to continue now with our Committee of the Whole. We have three agenda items listed today. The first is regarding the use of tax increment financing to revitalize the Algonquin Road Corridor. I will be deferring to City Manager Rob Sabel for this presentation. But I would like to highlight that the agenda packet this evening was prepared by our undergraduate intern, Annika Gerstong. Is she also presenting?
Yeah, we are going to do a little teamwork here.
It's joint?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, excellent. Okay. Then with that, take it away.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'd like to first introduce Annika Gerstong. She has been a tremendous asset to the city this summer. She joins us from the University of Illinois in Arlington, Knights Residence. So she gets to bike to work and utilizes our bike systems quite extensively here. She's done wonderful work for us in assisting the Community Development Department as well as the City Manager's Office. And so, I do give Annika a significant amount of credit, both with preparing the agenda item within the packet as well as what we are presenting this evening. I'm actually going to be handing this over to Annika to really kick off. But just as a general overview of what we're presenting this evening, we are seeking council direction as it pertains to the potential establishment of two new TIF districts here within the city of Rolling Meadows, specifically along the Algonquin Road Corridor. We'll talk about the background and some information generally about tax increment financing districts here in the state of Illinois, as well as getting into some of the details on existing TIFs and the areas that we are seeking council's direction and input on. I will just quickly note as well, TIF sometimes gets in a bad rap. I think sometimes there are examples out there historically where TIF may not have necessarily been used, always in the best outcomes of a community. However, included in the agenda packet was a report that identified a number of different successful TIFs that have existed out there within a number of communities in the Chicago area. And in addition to that, we'll be talking about two TIFs that exist here in our community that have worked beneficially to achieve ultimately redevelopment opportunities here in town. And so, without further ado, I will introduce Annika and then I'll step back up for the latter half of the presentation.
First, I just want to say thank you so much, Council and Mayor, for allowing me to present on this item. So yeah, with that, we'll get started in kind of the basics of TIF. So... There's a slight delay on the screen as well. So if it doesn't respond immediately. Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. So just some basic tax increment financing. It's an economic development tool that allows municipalities to basically earmark future property tax revenue to encourage and incentivize the redevelopment of an aging or underutilized area. So the way that TIF essentially works is a TIF district boundary is created with a list of parcels that are underperforming for whatever reason that the prop- that the city wants to see some sort of redevelopment at. The property values within this TIF district boundary are then frozen at that base property value, base EAV, as you can see at that, on the graph to the right. And then taxing districts like libraries and schools continue to receive the same amount of property tax revenue as they usually would. It's just all set at that base EAV. And then as development starts to occur within the TIF district, property values start to rise. And all of the increment above that be- that base EAV value is called increment and it goes into a special TIF fund that is used on projects within specifically that TIF district. And then TIFs last up to 23 years. They can also be ended sooner than that or can be an additional 12 years with an act of state legislation. And so, the one of the be- the benefits of a TIF district is that municipalities tend to have pretty wide discretion over the use of increment revenue in a TIF district. So this generally covers eligible costs of TIF increment. Can be infrastructure costs, facade improvements, public works improvements like sewers and sidewalks, redevelopment of buildings and things like that. And TIF funding can then be reimbursed to developers. And this helps them to essentially develop, have the capital to invest in this area that may be economically stagnant for whatever reason. And the major benefit of TIF is that it allows a city to create an initial push of investment into an area that likely would remain stagnant and likely wouldn't increase in property tax revenue and property tax values. And if done correctly, a successful TIF results in increased property values and revenue, a stronger and more resilient tax base, and essentially just creates that initial push to let the private market kind of do its thing on its own and create a higher value to residents of a city. And the states, this is a state mechanism. So the state has certain eligibility requirements to ensure that public money isn't being spent on private investment where it's not going to come back where it's not gonna come back to a community if it's not necessary. So some of the conditions that need to be met for a TIF district to be eligible for TIF money would be things like dilapidation, lack of physical maintenance, code violations, that kind of thing. And so now moving on to our existing TIF districts, so we do have two. The first active TIF district is on Kirchhoff and Owl. So this was first established in 2002, and then given that 23-year TIF life, it's set to expire at the end of 2025. And that resulted so far in $7 million of increment revenue, which helped to finance the purchase of property and redevelopment of the Riverwalk condominiums, as you can see. And then our second TIF district is along Gulf Road. This was first established in 2015, and so far, it has helped to finance the Arthur Gallagher headquarter relocation at 2850 Gulf Road, which brought in approximately 1,500 employees and 19 million increment value. And this also is one of those ones that has a shorter TIF lifespan to cover the property. So yeah, I'll bring that back to Rob to talk about our future proposed.
Thank you, Annika. So as we begin to dive into the proposed TIF areas that we are seeking direction to move forward with studying. The first one is the Algonquin Tollview area. The property, this, as you can see in the outline of the red dotted line, the property primarily encompasses the former Holodome Hotel property, as well as the Crossroads of Commerce office properties, and then also encapsulates the Aloft and Holiday and Express properties. Staff, as we evaluated, the initial boundary configuration also is recommending, as part of the study if direction is given, to also include the office building on the right side, that there's kind of a left-hand jog around, as well as the U-Haul property. The U-Haul property previously had come to the city about a potential opportunity to expand and conduct additional development on that site. It used to be an office building, actually, that housed Panasonic offices. And they ended up scrapping that project, but we do believe that with the size of that property, the amount of pavement surface, there is a potential opportunity for additional expansion, redevelopment of that site, further investment to help drive up the EAV, and ultimately additional revenues for all taxing bodies if that were to occur. The office building as well is an older office building, and similar to the properties within the Crossroads of Commerce site, has experienced various levels of occupancy and vacancy. Challenges that exist in this area, specifically with the Crossroads of Commerce properties, the three office buildings, they are all owned by separate entities, so there is not one ownership across all three properties. It's subdivided amongst three ownership groups. There is an association agreement with respect to the flow of traffic and the parking configuration, but with three operating entities operating within one footprint, it makes it sometimes difficult for us to make comprehensive change and improvements to the district. And so, diving into some of the site specifics, I'll note a few of the different images and things that staff has evaluated as we started to look at, you know, why would TIF potentially be a good use in this area. The council is well aware of the Aloft Hotel, which is now open and operating next door to it, is the Holodome property, which you see in the images here. The council has seen previously internal photos, we won't present those here, but obviously, this is a property that's in a pretty bad state of repair and is in immediate need for demolition. We've been working with the property owner on effectuating that outcome. However, the eventual development of the site, as well as the demolition of the site, site preparation, all include significant amounts of investment. One of the mechanisms that TIF has is the ability to leverage the potential of providing TIF assistance, whether it be to offer infrastructure assistance, some of the site preparation work, access work, all of those types of things give the city an opportunity to exert leverage into the type of outcome and development that we would like to see on that property. Obviously, it's a public-private partnership if that were to occur, but developers who work with cities on these types of incentive programs typically do tend to work with the city as far as reaching outcomes that are mutually desirable, both by, or mutually beneficial both for the developer, but also desirable for a development outcome for the city. And so as you take a look at the different properties, you can tell, and the council is well aware of this, that, you know, the property is in poor shape, and there's no secret, I know that everyone drives by that. As we look at the property and what TIF can also do, this is a picture that I've included here to identify how this is, the proposed areas contiguous one another, and how redevelopment of one parcel is gonna potentially effectuate and add additional aesthetic improvements, and I think overall economic improvements to the area. So here you can see the drive aisle that leads back to the Holiday and Express property, with the Holodome on the left and the Crossroads of Commerce property on the right. One of the things that exists, and I'll note, along the Algonquin Corridor thoroughly, is that we have significant amounts of above-ground power lines. Best practice and typically a community's aesthetic approach is to try to get burial of those lines. It does provide a little bit of hardening to the comm ed system, but it is a private expense, comm ed will not fund those. So that is typically a private expense to be able to do that. TIF is one of the ways that you can effectuate that as an aesthetic improvement. This is a view from the parking lot of the Crossroads of Commerce Center. Part of that parking area is in pretty poor shape. In talking with the different building owners, some of the owners have higher occupancy than others. One of the buildings has multiple floors that are vacant currently. As we evaluated these properties and took a look at whether or not to include them, a few considerations came to mind. The city and our business development strategic plan is focused on protecting our business infrastructure here, or, I'm sorry, our office infrastructure here in town, noting that daytime traffic is an important component to our economic vitality. People in offices and coming to work tend to go out to lunch and tend to go to the different stores and shops and businesses here in town. And so, if these properties ultimately do long-term stay as office properties, they are aging buildings. And so, part of the challenge that exists with these buildings are aging mechanical systems, aging exterior infrastructure. The Gold Building, for example, is about due for new window replacements. Finding gold windows is extraordinarily expensive and hard to find. These are just small examples, but yet, the types of improvements that a TIF could assist with, and again, we would have the leverage to be able to utilize our resources to help try to A, improve those properties, but B, drive further occupancy within them. I'll also note that this property, a few of these buildings have gone on and off the market for sale, and we have had a variety of different inquiries from developers of a variety of types who have come to the city with different ideas and prospective concepts that they would propose if the buildings were to be purchased and potentially repurposed. Some have been, an idea has come across as far as adaptive reuse of the building as a residential property. Others have been proposing to completely demolish and build brand-new buildings on these sites. The importance of this location specifically, and I think this picture really kind of draws that, is that on the left side you'll see Route 53 runs parallel to this building. The I-90 Route 53 interchange is a highly trafficked area. I believe there's about 250,000 vehicles that drive through there on an average daily basis, according to iDOT data. The visibility of this location is really important, I think, as far as a gateway into and out of our community, and especially knowing what might be coming in the future down the road. That may make this site a highly desirable development site. With the existence of a TIF, once again, going back to the leverage that the city would have, we would then have additional controls beyond just zoning authorities to be able to help incentivize the type of development that we would like to see there if ultimately these properties were to be transacted on. This is a view from the Holiday and Express back parking lot. On the right side, you see the office building that's there, as well as a view back towards the Holodome and the Aloft Center. Again, showing the connectedness in the interconnected area. This is looking backwards from that same spot at the U-Haul property. Again, you'll see that there's a significant amount of gray development. We'll talk about that later as far as parking minimums. But this lot is primarily used for U-Haul moving vehicles, and a lot of the lot is unused. So if there is an opportunity for us to work with U-Haul or a successor owner, that property operator, to seek additional development, once again, this is a highly visible site. This is a site that's also visible from the tollway along I-90. And so, it is a visible location and an opportunity for additional growth and development. And so, as part of a TIF eligibility study, what a third-party consultant would be doing, someone who specializes in land use and specifically looks at TIF, looks at land use and existing conditions from a TIF lens in accordance with the state statute, is to identify, do certain conditions, as Annika had mentioned earlier, exist to warrant the BUT4. You know, without the TIF, would we truly get the type of economic development that we'd like here? And that's part, and really one of the most important components of the TIF eligibility study. When we look at the second location, this is further east from the first site. It's bound by the Southland Shopping Center, which is a strip mall to the north, as well as 5350 Keystone Court, which is a now long-vacant office property, a pretty significantly large, single-story office building, as well as a few other commercial properties through the corridor. When we look at this area, this is an image of the former leasehold office building. This is 5350 Keystone. If you've been out there, it's a significant parking pad area. As a single-story office building, trying to tenant a property like this is challenging. We know that the brokers who are working on this site have had people come and go, but through a variety of different use. Challenges on the office market haven't necessarily found success with this. We have heard about potential redevelopment opportunities from both local and afar businesses. However, again, in order to effectuate the highest best use and potential redevelopment and long-term viability of the site, TIF might be a good opportunity for us to be able to effectuate that kind of redevelopment, which really maximizes the return on the investments that could occur here. This is a view from the east side of the parking lot, looking westward. Once again, it's a pretty large site that has a good opportunity for redevelopments, and again, is vacant and unused. This, images of a vacant, city-owned tract of land along Algonquin Road, located next to and near Meadowbrook, the intersection of Meadowbrook and Algonquin Road. Here you'll see above-ground electric infrastructure, which again, is an expense that any sort of development or use of the site would need. The city has attempted to sell this property in the past, and it would make most sense for this to be potentially developed as part of a contiguous parcel with either of the property neighbors. And again, TIF could help effectuate higher, better use of these kind of properties. This property here has one vacancy within it. However, it is an older property, and certainly is a property that would benefit from potential facade improvements, as well as the sign, which still has some out-of-date paneling on there. Looking here as we face eastward on Algonquin Road, you can see the above-ground infrastructure, utility infrastructure there. Burial of that would match some of the aesthetics that exist further east along Algonquin Road, as you get into the Arlington Heights portions of Algonquin Road. And then as you look at this image on the left, you see the Southland Shopping Center, as well as the Shell Station. The image on the right shows some of the infrastructure improvements that could benefit through TIF funds. There's a sidewalk that cuts off right into a grass space. It's not, you know, it may have been designed at one point to be fine, but today's day and age, we really try to create those interconnections, as well as ADA accessibility. And so TIF is one more resource that we could be able to get that done. The sign there is also in poor shape, and certainly would benefit from additional contributions. The Southland Center also of note, and was included in the agenda packet. The city is in the process of acquiring the above-ground spaces there for relocation of our Human Services Department and expansion of that. But beyond that, the exterior structure of the building, specifically is a stucco structure, is in cracking ship, let's put it that way. There's a number of areas along the stucco facade that would certainly benefit from a facade improvement. The property to, a strip mall to the east of there on the Arlington Heights side recently completed some facade work, and certainly there's, I think, an aesthetic improvement and benefit to that. The parking lot here as well is currently in pretty poor shape and has a number of stormwater management issues on the site. All of these things are TIF-eligible expenses. This image looks at Plum Creek Supportive Living. There is a vacant parcel next to it, which Plum Creek owns, and had planned for expansion of their property. They've received all their entitlements for the city, but some of the financing components to bring in the project together still are somewhat up in the air, and so we're still waiting on them to come in and obtain their permits from us. If that project weren't to move forward, once again, we're left with a vacant property that's been vacant for quite a long time, since the demolition of Russell's Barbecue. And so TIF would be something that we could potentially look at to achieve an outcome that we would desire for that use. And so, the outline, as you see here, once again, would be presented to a TIF consultant who would take a look at all of the different properties included within it, as well as the infrastructure that exists, and look at it from the lens of, you know, without TIF, would these kind of improvements occur? In addition to the private improvements, the intersection of Meadowbrook and Algonquin, the city has been looking for a number of years at reconfiguring that intersection. Right now, it's a hard turn as far as the angle that it approaches the intersection. TIF could be used for that improvement. And then going back to the previous TIF area as well, one note I'd like to also mention that I forgot to, is that right now, anyone who is leaving the Aloft Hotel or Holiday and Express has to exit that property directly into a curb cut on Algonquin Road, or exit off a tollview. Right now, there is no signalized intersection that those properties can access in order to make a left turn. And so, as anyone has experienced, Algonquin Road during rush hour traffic can be a difficult roadway to make a turn across without a signal. One of the things that we have talked to the Crossroads of Commerce building owners about is an interconnection of the Crossroads of Commerce roadway there to allow for an interconnection between the Holodome, Aloft, and Holiday and Express site to provide access to patrons of those properties to be able to access a signalized intersection. If we were to go to iDOT, and I believe we've actually made this request previously, because of the location of the signals right now on Algonquin Road, we likely would be rejected for any potential request for a signal at Tollview. And so, creating that interconnection there would be a way that we could bring people to a signalized intersection and allow them to safely get across Algonquin Road. And so, at this time, just as a quick overview of next steps, so the state law stipulates very specific steps that must be taken in order to establish a TIF. The point that we're at right now is the very beginning, where we are evaluating whether or not a TIF for these two locations would be viable. The first step to do that formally would be to engage a consultant to conduct that TIF eligibility study. The TIF eligibility study would also develop formally the TIF redevelopment project area, and those are matching the boundaries that we've shown here. The study, as we've said before, must find that one or more of the following conditions exist, which are blighted conditions, conservation conditions, so for historic districts trying to preserve, as well as industrial park conservation conditions. Following that process, the city will convene a meeting with the Joint Review Board. We meet with the JRB regularly already for existing TIFs. The Joint Review Board is a statutorily established body. What it is, is a representative body, including representatives from all the different overlapping taxing bodies, so the school districts, townships, the park district. Anyone who is a taxing body on a parcel within that proposed TIF area comes together and meets. The JRB then reviews the proposed TIF, and either provides a recommendation of support, or may not support it. If they don't support it, the approval ultimately requires a three-fifths vote of the council to approve. If it is supported, it's a simple majority for approval. The last step before the council is able to consider an ordinance would be a public hearing and providing the public an opportunity to present testimony before the council on the proposed TIF area. And so, that is an overview of the next steps if we were to proceed with establishing a TIF district. Staff has pulled together quotes from qualified consultants to prepare an eligibility study. The quotes that we've gotten in have been about 35,000 per TIF area, so cumulatively 70,000. We built in 75,000 for contingency in case there's any sort of cost overruns or additional work needed on the internal side from staff. And so at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have, and we're also seeking direction from council as to whether or not to proceed with preparation of a resolution for the August City Council meeting, which would approve a contract with the consultants to commence this eligibility study.
Thank you. At this time, are there any council members that have questions? Yes, Aldrin O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Annika, great work. This was a great write-up, and I've learned a lot about TIFs even after being on the council for six years. So, did I talk to Glenn before, and he goes, "No, that was majority Annika", so I do want to pass along the thanks as Glenn rightfully told me to do. Fully support this from the economic development perspective. We've had a lot of conversations just around TIFs in general. To me, this is two reasons of why TIFs exist for these parts of towns. The only question, and this might be part of the consultant study, Rob, City Manager Sabo, is there an estimated incremental revenue that's part of this study? Like, I know the examples of the ones we have in place now, we have the dollar figures for, but I know it's all based on EAV at the time. But is that part of some of the study of what estimated incremental revenue maybe?
So, the study itself is looking at existing conditions, and we can ask for estimates of an approximation with redevelopment, what that increment can generate. However, it's difficult for them to ultimately do that kind of estimation without knowing exactly what kind of development is going to be coming in place of whatever exists currently. And so, with the redevelopment process and the study, we can request anecdotal information. However, it wouldn't be as specific as we would get into once we start looking at developments. Typically, when a private developer comes forward with a request for TIF assistance, we do a BUT4 analysis, where we will look at what their gap is for the type of work that they're looking to do on the property. And we'll try to identify how much incentive is really necessary in order for this project to come to fruition. And it's an iterative process, where we go back and forth, and there's negotiation involved in that. Typically, once you have a bit more finite information on what kind of development you'll have- have, that's when you'll really get an understanding of what that increment will look like. But we can request that the consultants do take a look at this and give us an idea of what kind of increment we could generate with some forms, different forms of redevelopment on the sites.
I'm okay for passing on that. It would increase the cost that's in there, knowing that we would get it in the future. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Aldrin Boucher.
First, Anika, as a parent of a person, because you're not children, your age, you did a fantastic job. Standing in front of a group of people and presenting information is hard, so fantastic job. I just have a question because it's the first time TIFF has come in front of me. I'm just concerned about, you said the magic words, of making one of those buildings housing. I do not want to see what's happening, I don't want to see what's happening at the Motorola facility happening in Rolling Meadows where we are just shoving condos and apartments on top of condos and apartments, on top of condos and apartments in the sixth, fifth ward. That makes me very nervous that that's already been talked about because that is something, I know this building's empty in there, but that is something I would be very uninterested in, is putting more condensed housing into that area. So is that something that we can control if we own this TIFF or if somebody comes in and says, "I own the building, we're going to make it," and you've now given me TIFF assistance?
I'll allow our Community Development Director Glenn Cole to provide some insight on that.
Sure. In short, you know, certainly, a lot to pull apart there, but the city has, you know, there are objective standards to approve a planned development, right? But there are standards. I mean, the city does have a lot of ability to say no to types of development even before we get to offering incentives for development. I wouldn't be concerned about those type of outcomes coming out of this process unless the City Council wanted to see those type of outcomes coming out of this process.
Okay, I was just unsure if that was coming to us now. I just wanted to make sure we...
And then if I may, at this time, the proposed sites are listed here as zoned C2 and M1. So we have manufacturing as well as commercial. So for this to become a space that is conducive to residential or mixed use, that would require a change in zoning. And the changes in zoning would go through first our Planning and Zoning Commission for the recommendation to the council and then ultimately a majority, I don't know if it's a three-fourths majority or if it's a simple majority, to then change that zoning, which would also then require public hearing as well. So it is always possible that this could turn into residential if there's a majority of the council.
Correct.
So to say that, you know, that there's a guarantee that it won't change can't be made, but as it relates to the TIFF, this would be a separate process. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. As the policymaking body and at the time that we're establishing the TIFF, I think it's very appropriate for the City Council to establish the vision for these types of properties and future development of them. As Community Development Director Cole said, the planned development process provides the city with a lot of control. And so through that effort and the fact that the size of that type of a development would trigger a PUD process, there would be a significant amount of input and stepping points for any sort of development with a major change of use to have to go through with the city. So that control is entirely maintained, entirely even separate from the TIFF.
Okay. Any other questions? Good questions, everyone. Yes, Aldrin Budmats.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Aldrin Kohler and then Aldrin Budmats. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have two questions. The first one is the incremental tax that you get, is that only to be used within the district or can it be used in other city projects?
So it is primarily for use within the district. There's a very limited set of situations where something, a property or city infrastructure that exists right adjacent to the TIFF boundary can utilize that TIFF fund, but it's a very limited situation. So for the most part, yes, it is only usable within the actual TIFF boundaries themselves.
Right. Second question. So my second question is, have you considered extending TIFF District, the proposed TIFF Number One, west of 53 to include the area between the Preserves of Woodfield to Algonquin Road? That is where the Quick Trips will go, but then there's the other places that are often vacant. Have we considered looking at that as being included in TIFF District One?
Early on, it was a consideration with the redevelopment of the Quick Trip property and the hopes that that will then trigger further investment along that stretch there. We didn't include it. The council can certainly direct us to include that. I'd have to take a look at the contiguousness of the boundary with 53 running through. That is one thing that we'd have to take a look at, but with the highways that run through it, it depends on whether or not we have it annexed into the community or whether it stands alone. So we can look at that. However, as far as the consideration for this specific TIFF proposal, we didn't include it in the boundaries.
Okay, so as the only commercial zone in the seventh ward, I would like you to take a look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then as a follow-up question to our staff, if we were to increase the boundaries from the proposed TIFF Number One, would that impact the estimate that's being requested here for that $75,000?
I would doubt that it will. It may. I think that generally, the studies themselves are based on the complexity of the area to be studied. So if you were to do a downtown TIFF, for example, where you are taking multiple blocks, those are larger cost projects, whereas this is a contiguous strip of a single roadway. I would anticipate that we would still be able to accomplish that within the $75,000 figure.
Okay. And then is it typical for these types of studies to provide additional information to say, within X boundary, this would qualify for TIFF? And if you do X plus one boundary, it would not, given what you had stated about the Quick Trip development?
Yeah, I think what happens with the studies is that they'll take a look at the boundaries holistically and if there is a property that would essentially be determined to not be meeting this TIFF eligibility, then there may be the recommendation that the boundary itself be modified. Sometimes properties will be included because of just the contiguous nature and the need for a TIFF boundary to be contiguous and there being a landlock around it. But for the most part, if it is a boundary property, then there may be a scenario where the eligibility study will say, yes, this should be removed because it is at its highest best value at the present time.
Okay. Then I have a follow-up then, Aldrin Kohler. So you are requesting then a wider boundary for TIFF One and you want to include the remaining part of Ward Seven south of Algonquin Road? Is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Is there anything that you wanted to exclude from the preliminary request for the study?
Yeah, so there is the Quick Trips, which is already in the plans. I think it's already moving forward. I would start, you know, where they demolished going east to 53. I don't think we have to do that. The only thing that I have a concern about in that whole area there is what we've talked about in road configuration because they got that strange frontage road and the entrance and it's just a traffic nightmare during rush hours. And so that's why I kind of think it could be part of the district to help straighten that out if we also get incentives to get... I'm not sure where we stand with the Arminetis and the adjacent places, if that's...
Yeah, so if ultimately we are working towards pedestrian multimodal types of improvements and accessibility, including the boundaries would be helpful. There is an argument to be made about properties that are undergoing or proposed for redevelopment being included in a TIFF boundary from the sake of generating increment to help with some of those kind of projects. And so, for example, if the Quick Trip property is included, the current existing status of that property is where the base is going to be frozen at, which is a vacant parcel. Once it's redeveloped, you then capture the increment, which can then be reinvested back into making those kind of multimodal improvements to that area. The other thing that TIFF provides for and a portion of the TIFF fund can help contribute to this, but for example, the city is working on a bike walk plan. And so planning initiatives are also eligible to be included as a TIFF eligible expense. And so as we look at interconnectivity and the pedestrian accessibility through that area, even getting from Crossroads of Commerce under 53 to the Quick Trip area, vice versa, by creating a contiguous boundary, you then can include those areas as potential opportunities for the city to make improvements. And with 53 running there potentially as a partnership with IDOT, so...
So Madam Mayor, since you're very familiar with this, it was pretty award. You know, if putting the section where Quick Trips into it may hurt because it's under development, why include it? Not include that space. But I do think that whole area's roadways need to be configured, so that's why I asked the question, could you use it for things outside the boundary? In that case, you'd want to include that in the boundary so you can do that road configuration, straighten that out there. That's the reason I was, my questions were tied together.
And I wanted to make sure then, for this, so the question right now before the council is not to determine the TIFF boundary itself, but to have two proposals for a consultant to review their eligibility. It sounds like you are in favor of increasing the area at issue to be included and it sounds like this would not be an increasing cost to review this potential to have pedestrian and road improvements from the driveway that we know has a lot of accidents. We're trying to work with our colleagues over at the Village of Schaumburg already on projects related to that intersection. So we have then kind of before us that thought, I'm just, is this something that the council would be in favor of at this point, including? Okay. Aldrin Budmats.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I am curious about the Aloft project property and the Holodome project because the...
So this is TIFF Number Two we're talking about?
In TIFF Number One.
Oh, yes, you're right. I'm sorry.
In TIFF Number One. So the question is, is that seeing that the Aloft property has already been redeveloped and is functioning as a redeveloped property, would that be excluded then from the TIFF? Or I'm trying to, because how would we be able to say that it needs redevelopment or that it's blighted seeing that it's basically brand new?
So preliminarily, the owner of the Aloft Holodome Holiday Inn Express, it's a single owner, had hired an independent TIFF consultant to take a look at what we'll call a micro-TIF approach, which some communities will use for pretty large properties that are ripe for redevelopment, so like a gigantic warehouse, for example. And what they determined is that standing alone, the Holiday, the Holodome property would not meet the size thresholds for it to qualify as a micro-TIF. And so for that reason, it was then expanded to include the other parcels, both from, well, there's a couple of different considerations as to why. One, the drive access, so interconnectivity of the actual parcel itself and redevelopment of the Holodome site is going to likely create a change in the way that the drives move through that property. But beyond that, the other components that were considered at the time we were looking at this is the fire alarm, for example, and the fire suppression system for the Holiday Inn Express was historically built in the Holodome property. And so relocating all of that infrastructure, which the owner has been working with the city on accomplishing, is also an interconnected component of the way that the site has been developed previously. And so with the individual parcel not being eligible, there was a recommendation to include all the three parcels together so that when this ultimately comes to a development point, we can utilize and take a look at this holistically to see how do the three different parcels come together with one full development.
So seeing that this is, maybe it sounds like sticky, how will the city be able to, if the creation of the TIFF, will the city be able to control the expenditure funds or the project approvals so that further development or improvements to the Aloft property don't occur at the cost of actually approving or repairing the Holodome or the Holiday Inn Express property?
So the ultimate control of expenditures of TIFF lie with the City Council. So there is no authority for expenditures out of the TIFF outside of small expenditures under $25,000, let's call it, within our purchasing manual. Primarily, any type of project that we would seek any sort of public-private partnership contribution for would come to the council for approval. Even from my own, within my own authority as the city manager, if it were to be below $25,000, but it was some sort of expenditure that related to a public-private partnership, I would still put that on a council agenda for approval. So the TIFF itself provides the city with leverage in order to control and exert that desired outcome. And ultimately, any approvals at the end of the day for any sort of agreement contribution would have to come through and be approved by the City Council. There wouldn't be a unilateral approach or a secondary body that would be able to expend out of the TIFF on its entirely vested with the elected officials of the city.
But we have the ability to, or you have the ability to encourage the developers to make sure that anything that's brought before us isn't packaged together with improvements to Aloft as well as improvements to the other similarly owned or commonly owned properties on the same tax index number.
Yes, so if they were to be coming to us and asking for TIFF assistance, that then triggers. Let's say they weren't requesting TIFF assistance, then it goes through just the planned development process. But if there is a request for TIFF assistance, we can then work with that developer and the property owner to structure to what extent that assistance is provided and what that assistance and desired outcome looks like from the City Council's, the city's perspective.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions for our city staff this evening? Okay, so then based off of the discussions that we had, it looks like we would like to expand TIFF One for the preliminary request and it sounds like we have, you know, it's going to do a straw vote in favor of the consultant, unanimous as well, to request the consultants. And so we should see then the resolution before us on August.
Yes, at the August City Council meeting.
Okay. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
With that, we can now move on to our second item on the Committee of the Hall, which is a community development fee study. For this, I will defer to Assistant City Manager slash Community Development Director Glenn Cole, who will have a PowerPoint presentation for us regarding the fee study for community development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I get started, I'd like to note this is a, this can be a dense topic. We certainly are not, I'm certainly not trying to discourage the council from taking an interest in it. Just in the interest of time and knowing your agenda, we'll be very brief with the slides, happy to answer any questions or we can also bring this back at a different time. Just trying to be considerate of the agenda this evening. So a big part of, you know, something that is somewhat unique to community development among the many different operating functions of the city is its reliance on user fees to pay the bills, right? I shouldn't say completely unique. Of course, you turn on a water tap, you pay for the water, you pay for the sewer, you get an ambulance ride, you know, you pay for the ambulance ride, but of course, that's not much compared to the cost of fire and medical protection. But community development tends to get proportionately a relatively large share as a whole department from activity that is inspected by us or that is licensed by us that takes place within the city. And so of course, the fees that we charge for that activity, you know, relate to the amount of time, you know, of our inspectors or our administrative staff, to a lesser extent, myself and our management staff in overseeing those functions and enforcing the city's building codes and so on. In short, we are a fee-sensitive department. It is good practice for us to look at these fees fairly comprehensively from time to time as the City Council has in other operating areas. Since I've been with the city, it's been a goal of the administration and myself to do that for a community development department. That's the results of what you have here before you this evening. Our goals in this, just so you're thinking about them, first really is to acknowledge that we have lost ground on our cost recovery goals. In some cases, these fees haven't really had an adjustment since 2007. Inflation has had, a lot of inflation's happened since 2007. The City Council has previously looked at these and different occasions has said, most recently during COVID-19 pandemic, not a great time to be raising fees, we need to hold the line a bit more. Of course, we're open to whatever direction the council would like, but our understanding from these reviews is that, you know, the position continues to drift and this may be time to start bringing this back into alignment. And we've been very transparent about how we propose to do that and we think we've done that in a way that minimizes, that is reasonable, that distributes costs fairly, that minimizes the pain to any particular person or project or landowner. The second part is just, and I should mention here too, that, you know, the more our fee position slips, our cost recovery slips, the more indirectly that these costs lean on the sales tax, lean on the property tax, start to pull funding away from capital projects and other initiatives within the city. The second important thing we wanted to address was just that in Rolling Meadows in particular, I would say that the, the city has just a very complicated fee schedule. This fee schedule is not fully implemented in our software, which is another set of problems. But we were able to count up at least two hundred and thirty different fees that were applying. That's very unpredictable, that's very difficult to manage, that leads to a lot of unusual outcomes. And so one of the things we're trying to do is get to fewer fees that are as effective, that are easier for us to manage, and that are easier for people to plan for and budget for and incorporate into what they're doing. So again, different types of governmental revenue. Tonight's about user fees. The, the rule in Illinois is that these fees should reasonably approximate the cost of service. We don't want to be pulling in massive amounts of revenue from fees that don't really have anything to do with what we're charging fees for. There are a lot of different considerations and there was some optional reading in the packet about what we think about when we're setting these fees, you know, is it good for the community? What's the marginal cost of the activity? How hard is it to administer the fee and so on? You'll hear us make reference, probably each of these through the presentation. There's also just general revenue considerations as well, right? Some fees are more volatile with the economy, some fees are less. Some fees are bigger, some fees are smaller. And so we're trying to make a very balanced picture of how we fund these operations. So from an estimate, this is an estimate based on permit workload, licensed workload, so on, as well as a crosswalk of fees to that. We know that this is predominantly a building department. Nothing in here is a surprise or unusual compared to other communities. Most of our time spent on building, we spend some time on rental licensing, on business licensing, a bit of time on contractor licensing, which if you consider that business or building or what have you, I'm not sure. And then we also spend a decent amount of time enforcing the city's codes regarding building and zoning and so on. This excludes our zoning, our planning work, which tends to be harder to tie to particular activities. I'll also say too, we include code enforcement here just for the sake of completeness, but we don't really treat fines and tickets as a revenue source. That's not something we're looking to adjust. We just are essentially backing that out and determining what's the rest of the cost we need to pick up. In total here, we're running at about forty percent. If you look at different communities in the metro, it's all over the place. Many are running lower than this mark, some are running higher. You'll see a lot in the literature about trying to reach a hundred percent. I, I don't know of a community that does that in this kind of work. But just if you're trying to boil this down to one number, it's forty percent. So with that in mind, we are, are working through the fees we're collecting from each of these categories. Building permits, there's a lot of different fees in the code, again, over two hundred of them. Most of them relate to building. This has been a tremendously fun project for me, I can assure you. At its most, yeah, at its most complicated, one building permit can have, you know, potentially, let's say, twenty or so fees, right? There's an overall permit fee, which is a percentage of value on the whole permit. There are different trade permit fees, each of which has a percentage of value on that trade, as well as a minimum on that trade. We start to count up the fixtures, so we count up toilets, we charge you, I think it's eight bucks a toilet, we charge you five bucks a mechanical unit. We charge you a plan review fee on top of that, percentage on top of that, a fee for each inspection that we come out to do. And then a fee to give you a certificate that says that we did all those things we just talked about. That can be a bit convoluted. What you'll see in this fee structure is we are crossing off a lot of these. We are recapturing the revenue that these generated through a simple fee based on value. There's a bit of tiering just based on how we observe fees are working right now. In residential, it's a flat rate, which mirrors, again, current conditions today. In commercial, it tiers a bit based on the value of the project. Value again here is a proxy for complexity. Some projects win here, some projects are cheaper if they were to happen again, some projects are more expensive. It, it's more or less random chance which bucket you fall into. To that point, again, in the world of residential, we just look at the whole permit, we don't split it up. We say two and a quarter percent, minimum of a fixed fee, we'll talk about that in a bit. In the non-residential world, we start at two and a half, then after that, we go two and a quarter, then after that, we go two percent. Again, that's not perfect, but that tends to be a pretty good proxy for, you know, the, the complexity of the work and the amount of work that we're putting into a particular project. Lot easier to take out a calculator and punch in point oh two than anything else we just talked about. There are some projects where this percentage-based approach probably isn't fair. Commercial re-roofs, those are very simple projects. Parking lot work tends to be pretty simple and so on. For those projects, we're looking at a lower cost, a percent and a quarter, minimum of that fixed fee amount. Again, that a percent is just about what we're collecting right now. That quarter percent again helps to pull back our cost recovery ratio a bit. Some very nerdy charts. In short, on the Y-axis, this is the percentage of project value that was fees. On the X-axis is the value of the permit. This is a log scale, so you're, you're going up by an exponent every time you move over. But in short, you see these sweeping curves, right? Right now, for small projects, you're probably paying a large amount of the project in fees. You know, if you're just building a shed, you're probably paying a pretty good chunk of money relative to the value of that shed for permission to build it. But as you get really into the heart of, of it on both of these scales, that dashed line is about the two and a half percent line. Many of these projects are around two and a half percent. On the right-hand side is that limited fee schedule. Again, that dashed line is that one and a quarter percent mark. There's also in this world, many things that because they are pretty predictable units of work, we just charge a fat, a flat fee for. So siding, air conditioners, furnaces, roofs, driveways, water heaters and so on. Right now, the residential fee for these is between fifty and seventy-five dollars. In the world of commercial, if you're doing one of these projects, it can be a hundred or a hundred twenty-five. Again, grouping these up, taking a lot of complexity out of the schedule just to get to seventy-five dollars in residential. So some permits stay the same, a hundred fifty dollars in non-residential, which is commercial, multifamily and so on. And this really becomes the floor for these other different types of permits. Finally, there's some pass-through work. We do a mix on any project of consulting and in-house staff. For these particular fire categories, fire and elevators, that's almost exclusively done out of house. We collect a fee to cover just our costs really of administering it. And then we just pass on the actual consultant costs, no markup. That's reviews and inspections. Again, the only markup we take there is that hundred fifty administrative fee, which is us coordinating with the consultant and issuing the permit and so on. A couple other things here. So again, going back, we did want to keep a separate plan review fee because some projects are abandoned, they still have a plan review fee. That's also work that's predominantly done by our consultant now, so we want to keep that separated out from our blended percentage. Here, this really follows our current practice, again, with a little bit of adjustment. For small projects, it's a flat rate forty-five dollars regardless of our consultant invoicing. For slightly larger projects, we get into ninety dollars, again, regardless of our consultant invoicing. After that, we're just passing on actual cost. Another small item of interest here, sign permit fees, those are by the square foot right now. And we're proposing to shrink down those categories and just apply flat fees, except the very large monument sized signs, thirty feet taller and larger, as well as electronic sign boards. Those are just more complicated projects. You do all that, some more fun charts. You can see that out of this all, we throw off about another fifty thousand dollars in permit revenue. I will say too, that is assuming that the city stops issuing permits, stops collecting revenue for in-kind window replacement, in-kind door replacement. So that's some money going back to homeowners in their pocket based on that. That's not something we're, we're really sure adds a lot of value at this point. These charts on the right just show you how many permits, if they were to happen again. You know, who pays more, who pays less, how much? That first gray line is a hundred, that second gray line is two hundred. You can see if this were to happen again, very many, there are some outliers on both ends. Very many permits, it's, you know, a hundred dollars or less is, is the net difference. It just is collected broadly across our whole fleet of permits. Because there's so much complexity and there's so much simplifying and changing happening here, we want to make sure we weren't giving away the farm. This is not a forecast of the future, this is a technique called bootstrapping. So we know there's two thousand permits. We go and two thousand times, funny enough, we pick a random set of two thousand permits. So any of our current permits might be in there ten times or one time or no time. Just to make sure that if we get different distributions of work, that we'll still get about the expected outcomes. So most of the time, again, you get about that fifty thousand dollar mark. Might be, you know, a bit more or a bit less, but we know that we're getting ourselves a stable stream of revenue. Again, this isn't a forecast of the future. If you talk to the AIA, if you talk to the construction folks, they're seeing markets probably slowing down in the next year. I'd say we're being buoyed into twenty twenty-six by a few larger projects like Pacifica, like QuickTrip. But we are, I think, in, in this industry, seeing the signs of a slowdown too between a lot of macroeconomic issues, tariffs, labor, interest rates. So, you know, please do not think there's a guarantee of fifty thousand extra coming in next year. This is a volatile revenue source. But again, we've tried to be deliberate while also being fair. A couple little items of note here too. Site work permits, civil work permits, that's something the city continues to change how we administer as we've been moving from Sebel, our contractual city engineer, to an in-house city engineer. We continue to change how that works. And we're proposing to keep that at a, at the limited fee rate with an admin fee and consultant costs, which is probably less than our cost to oversee these, but continues, this is something that we'll need to keep fine tuning. We're also proposing to start charging a fee for submission of paper plans. We need to pay a fee to digitize those. It's time-consuming, so we send it out of house. And we want to encourage people to just make those submissions digitally. It's free, most professional shops do it. Homeowners applying on their own usually use eight and a half by eleven, but there's not a fee on that. But when we get roll plans, we really want people to send us PDFs of those roll plans. That's the hardest part, the rest is simpler and I'll move faster. Rental licensing, you saw in the time breakdown, we think it takes up about ten percent of our time. I'll say I think that's a bit of an underestimation. In the last few years, we've been working to restart that program. But we just have, especially with our individual homeowners, individual unit operators, a lot of difficulty getting inspections scheduled on time, getting things paid on time. A lot of just code enforcement issues coming out of that that are taking a lot of time, more than that ten percent would look. What we're proposing to do here, there's a tiered fee. Fifty percent for condominiums, which assumes that we're looking at the exterior anyway, we're not in Rolling Meadows. Seventy-five for single family. And then there's a unit fee for apartments. We're proposing, the, the apartment fee is probably about right for condominiums and single-family dwellings. We're proposing to take those to a matched fee of a hundred per unit. If you look in Palatine, it's in the neighborhood of ninety. If you look in Schaumburg, it can be lower or higher depending. But we think this is closer to our actual cost of following these dwellings, of inspecting them, where most of our inspection work is really in the interior. And it's really, you recall from our earlier presentation, life safety. We think this will make a, a better stream to account for, at least for right now, the, the amount of time that work is taking. Business licenses are another large revenue stream for the department. Here, in short, just like building permits, we're trying to simplify that. We're trying to capture a lot of different little streams of revenue in just some very simple fees. We are proposing really to take these different fee categories, our annual sign inspections, our different accessory uses, uses like outdoor dining, get those to one general business license with a square footage. You can see that approach elsewhere in the metro, Schaumburg has an example. Right now, our fees range from one fifty or one hundred to seven hundred. That again climbs a little bit to one fifty to nine fifty. That nine fifty is really just very large establishments in the city, there's perhaps one or two. Part of what we need to balance out here is for our restaurants, there's a pretty significant cost to the city for health inspections that are absorbed. We, we have to, we have a separate inspector who is an environmental health practitioner, which is state licensed profession, who does that work. We're proposing to add on a separate fee category just for those food establishments to more accurately recapture that cost. Again, the chart on the right, most businesses, there are outliers in both directions, some of these are in error. Most businesses pay a hundred dollars more or less. We keep categories for businesses that don't fit well into that square footage, we increase them a bit. Same with business registration fees, these are nonprofits, these are exempt businesses. We, we increase the fee slightly because that's based on the salary of our fire inspector who makes sure that they meet the fire code. And we're looking at two additional fees that really help us with code enforcement. One is outdoor storage, that's a big code enforcement issue in the city. Just having this fee in place, we hope it will be an effective tool to stop outdoor storage from popping up without people asking first, because that's a zoning issue for us. The second condominium, townhome, homeowners associations, we have a lot of trouble contacting these folks reliably right now. We think both for general city communications and for code enforcement, we need better ability to reach these folks and when needed. And, and this simple fee again is done elsewhere in the metro, gives us a tool to do that. Again, a few little ones, contractor licensing, we propose to eliminate some differentiations, take those to one twenty-five per contractor. If you're physically located within Rolling Meadows, your business license is your contractor license, we don't charge that extra. But again, one twenty-five per contractor comparable elsewhere and covers the cost of, you know, the, the research and the bonding and the insurance and so on, to make sure we have reputable contractors in the city. Elevator operating certificates, again, proposing to increase that cost moderately, both for inflation as well as for just administration. Our consultant is very graciously, you know, we have a good partnership with them and they've, they've kept our fees very low. Some of this is as we are continuing to clean up our elevator licenses, there's work that goes into that. And finally, zoning applications, again, many types, go into a few types. We just take that fee up to a thousand instead of going one, two, three different types of applications. We just say, we're calling a hearing for you, it's a thousand bucks. Certain very large developments go bigger, but simple, simple, simple. All of that said, you put all that together, if last year's activity happens again, this would be about an extra hundred twenty thousand dollars in revenue that moves our cost recovery ratio up eight flat points. You know, twenty percent as a percentage up to forty-eight. And you can keep going higher with that, you can, you can ask us to pull back. We think this is a very reasonable position for the value of the work that's happening and for the length of time since we've looked at these and updated these. So happy to answer any questions. Our two questions for the council, one is just, you know, in this world as well as in other worlds, the city continues to lose ground over time because we're not making regular smaller adjustments, which frankly, I think many folks would prefer to make five or ten dollars at a time than a hundred, two hundred. I don't, I don't like necessarily having to propose those big jumps, even though many of these won't be realized by folks. And so we would encourage you to think about directing us to, to implement, you know, either a more, an annual fee review or just an automatic escalator, for example, Aurora does that, to where we're not losing ground and we don't touch these things for years at a time. And then second, with any feedback, we're just looking for direction to proceed with these provisions. We'd bring them back to you in a couple of months and implement those on January twenty twenty-six.
Thank you very much, Community Development Director Cole. With that, are there any questions for our city staff regarding the presentation that we had today? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
I'm going to keep this brief, and I'm not going to ask you to redo this whole thing. But has anybody ever considered in this fee structure that you just ask to be reimbursed for the time spent? Because we're really trying to recover time, right? Is that, is that the cost here, time?
The, our current fee structure, I think is unique for its complexity, but is not unique in its approach. And the approach is intended to achieve what you just described. So we're, you know, there's a bit of a proxy there in terms of not just like taking hours and passing them along. But you know, you, you figure out how many hours it takes for a, a water heater and you multiply that by the person's hourly rate, and that's the water heater fee.
Great, so I get that. And the only reason I say that, and I'll try to be brief here. The only reason I try, I say that is because when you get building permits to come in, some of them are going to be, some of the files are going to be a mess to go through, and some of them with good contractors are going to try to expedite it and get it done quickly. Am I correct?
Yes, and we, we, we see both, there, there's a bit of unfairness in there.
Right.
The, the plan review fee, because it's consultant-driven, we get an hourly invoice, we pass it on. So that is reflected well there.
Okay.
When you get into inspections, if folks aren't prepared for their inspections, we didn't talk about it in here, but there's a re-inspection fee that starts to escalate if people continue to be not prepared. So there's some guardrails on that.
So I'm not asking you to redo this, I'm just saying, think about down the road in the future, figuring out how you recover the cost that's tied directly to the cost of time spent on the project. figuring out how you recover the cost that's tied directly to the cost of time spent on the project. And then it would automatically, by the way, have an escalator in there. Every time the engineer or whoever is involved, you know, rate per hour goes up. So that passes along automatically an escalation. So I just point that out, I'm not asking you to change this, I would go ahead with what you have here. But just something to think about is, is anybody doing this or look at? Just, because it's all cost recovery of the time people spend, is my, is the bulk of it. Bad projects, you're going to spend more time. Good projects with good contractors, they're going to try to expedite that for you and they get a better rate. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I will say, Madam Mayor, I was the most concerned about being grilled on my statistical techniques by Alderman Kohler. I am grateful to have dodged that line of question.
I am following your math very carefully here.
I was going to say, no, no notes on your logarithmic scales, so hold on. Any other questions for staff? Yes, Alderman Bud Matts.
In rebutting Alderman Kohler's comments, I don't think we should be charging homeowners the full amount to educate them. If they're coming in, they're pulling, doing a permit, pulling a permit, doing the right thing, but they're not aware of the process, I would hate to charge them by the hour for what it really costs us. Sometimes they need to be educated at a much lower rate than the commercial customer who comes through. And so that's the only, that's the only thing that I worry about is that we're not, that the guy who's trying to change his, you know, his own water heater doesn't pay a huge price for that. The only other thing, when you talked about rentals, properties and getting code enforcement issues, I mean, honestly, we should be, if they're not getting their, if they're not calling to get their code enforcement inspections done, then we really should be doubling their fees. And so that the onus is on them to call for the, for the inspections, not on us to chase them.
Right now, the fees double on the day they're due. We've had some luck with that, I'm looking for where Jordan has gone here, our deputy director. I think we're writing 40 tickets or so right now? 60 tickets out of 600 licenses for noncompliance, so. And that's, that's on about our fourth, fifth notice, those folks have taken that fee.
Then do it again, until we make them out and turn them into believers that we really mean it.
Okay. What other questions or comments do we have from the council on our fee schedule? Okay, so it sounds like this is not aggressive enough, is what I'm hearing here.
Just for penalties on people who don't want to have code enforcement inspections for rental properties.
There are communities that'll do a double, double fee, we can, we can bring that to you.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, I'm getting agreement as well on the side of the dais. So looking forward to then seeing that change for the penalties. And then as far as the current structure, it sounds like we are also getting unanimous approval to proceed with the provisions that were proposed this evening. As far as what this could look like for more regular adjustments in the future, we have one comment from Alderman Kohler. Is there any other, any other comments from council regarding that request from staff? Yes, Alderman O'Brien.
My initial thought, I think Assistant City Manager Cole, you hit on it. I'm assuming it's easier if we just do move to a flat percent, because I am one like that. And hearing from residents on property taxes and everything else, they'd rather have smaller increments versus every five years and then we're jumping it by 50 bucks. They understand the background on it when I've talked to them. But is, like, that would be less staff time too, because I know this is an arduous process. I don't know, I can imagine it's an arduous process based on the conversation, that I would rather staff time be allocated to something else where we have, and I'm making this up, a percent and a half increase every year. Or whatever the norm might be for this area. That would be my recommendation versus staff delving in 100 hours. It's probably 1,000 hours, but 100 hours to do this type of research every three or five years, I would be comfortable with whatever a recommendation would be based on the industry and area of just an automatic escalator.
To be, to maybe clarify this, this discussion point, Alderman, I think that's all understood. What I would highlight for the council is it's, I'm relatively an outsider coming to this. I've been with the city a little under three years now. There's been, you know, a look at water fees and this realization, a look at connection fees and this realization. A more regular mechanism in this world would be good. More regular mechanism, you know, really at a citywide level is what I would be recommending to you here. And that's something we can bring you in conjunction with this, you know, in policy or as a mechanism in connection with the upcoming budget discussion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, in that case, we'll look forward to some suggestions for more regular adjustments during the budget. Yes, Alderman Dushay.
My only concern with a 1% every year is if a permit goes, I'm just 20 bucks isn't using the number. And then it becomes 2150, and then it becomes 22, 20, like, I hate weird numbers. And if those numbers, like, I can't just bring you $20 and be like, this is, we're good. And now all of a sudden, it's, it's weird. Is there any way we could be like, each, we could do that math? Because you seem to be very good at the math, to be like, we're going to increase it $2, whatever that would be in rounded, so we're not all of a sudden having a permit that's 3766 and being like, that's just what it is, because we arbitrarily raised it a percent and a half every year. That's just a thing for me. I hate when I go somewhere thinking it's going to be a whole number. And people just, that's just my thing.
So then, if I may, then to, for the budget discussion, it sounds like there is interest from the council regarding what kind of adjustments, what incremental adjustments, and how the adjustments incorporate the cost of work from staff, as we look at the budget moving forward. Okay, got some consensus on that. Okay, are there any other questions or comments then regarding this topic? Okay, then we will move on to our third and final item for our committee of the hold this evening before starting our city council meeting. And this is regarding the minimum required off-street parking ratio. This was an item that had been brought forth to the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier this month. And for this, I am not deferring to Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole. I am referring to.
Robert Savage, Planner and Management Analyst with Community Development.
Thank you, I wanted to make sure I didn't get your title wrong, so thank you for stating your title. Please proceed when you're ready.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council and members of the public. Going to talk about everyone's favorite topic this evening, which is obviously parking. A hot topic around town. So the city is hoping to bring a text amendment to the Planning and Zoning Commission in the upcoming August meeting, which would adjust the minimum required parking ratio requirement. Sorry, minimum required parking ratios. So minimum off-street parking ratio requirements are the spaces that are required by all land uses within the city. The city has 67 individual land use categories. It covers manufacturing, commercial, residential, specific uses. In essence, they are numbers that are derived loosely from the Institute of Traffic Engineers, the IT Parking Generation Manual. So over time, these numbers are tailored by staff and introduced into modernized code additions. And they generally revolve around a certain amount of parking spaces per, per unit. So typically, that'll be something like spaces per 1,000 square feet or it could be other, other units such as, you know, one, one space per four persons of design capacity. And that one's particularly nebulous and difficult to enforce. But for the most part, restaurants would require 10 per 1,000 square feet, offices four per 1,000 square feet, and et cetera, over 67 land use categories. So in essence, this is a simple, repeatable, objective measure of, of how to manage parking. The Sustainability Plan asks us to reexamine its requirements for private development with regards to parking. So it notes that there can be an impediment to sustainable development and efficient land use patterns within the city. There are numerous environmental costs associated with large swathes of paved impermeable surfaces. These include the heat island effect. You can see quite a good illustration of this where, you know, pavement roasting under the sun gets really hot. This is an impediment to vegetation, it does bad things for biodiversity. But further, you know, it's really bad for, it creates a lot of difficulty for stormwater and drainage management. It also creates impediments to pedestrian oriented development, which has downstream impacts to health and connectivity and even economic development goals. So overall, you know, large parking lots are an aesthetic and urbanizing kind of great infrastructure in the city. So the Comprehensive Plan also makes several goals related to this land use. And, you know, the idea is to support land use patterns that avoids impacts to residential areas. It provides access to businesses and amenities. And essentially, both plans encourage land use policies that are more responsible to the environment and efficiently utilize our scarce resources to generate more sustainable and productive development patterns. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual. So essentially, this is a, essentially a guideline. They don't necessarily make recommendations. They, what they do is report the number of vehicle trips as a function of land use. And they have about 1,500 different land use categories in theirs, it's much more complex than our zoning code. And they, they will take a study, which is an observation at a certain land use, and track how many vehicles are parked at that site at that time. These reports are based on observed data at mostly peak times and at selected and often, often limited locations. As you can see on the chart on the right, this is for fast food restaurant with drive-in window. You can see there's 18 studies, so 18 observations. And, and there's quite a loose correlation between the floor space of, of the restaurant and the amount of parking that's being utilized in the parking lot. The X-axis going across is the floor space and then parking spaces going vertically. What you can see is on the far right, our 6,000 square foot restaurant had very, very little parking utilization. Our 1,500 square foot restaurants had very low parking utilization. And around that 3,000 square foot mark, there's quite a lot of variability in the parking utilization. So what this kind of tells us is that it's difficult to necessarily determine the parking from the, the parking utilization from the floor space. Nonetheless, the average rate of roughly 10 has been loosely adopted into our city's code of 10 per 1,000 square feet for restaurants. This is somewhat in the middle of comparable communities, it's very common. We are in a, you know, a fairly similar situation to most neighboring communities. Schaumburg, you can see, is a little bit higher for this particular land use. They have more restaurant categories that they, they pass out. And some of them are lower than our required parking ratios. Same with Streamwood and Arlington Heights, more categories, more variability. What we're seeing is general reductions in parking demand. Obviously, the post-COVID environment, and we don't like to talk about COVID anymore, but it has left some lingering fingerprints on how we interact with commerce and how we interact with work. So people are still much more inclined to rely on food delivery services, online shopping. There has been a persistent and dramatic reduction in suburban office floor space. People are tending to work from home still and work digitally and work across different domains like that. And I'm not sure about you, but I don't hang out at the mall anymore, and I'm sure most people don't either. So the outcomes for larger developments, and I'll show you a few examples, and this should be a fairly familiar picture as you drive around some of our larger PUD developments, is largely a lot of impervious and a lot of underutilized floor space, area outside of these locations as parking lots. Marketplace of Rolling Meadows, you know, we're likely to see some increased utilization with Pacifica on the bottom left there. But we do see, as a fairly constant state of affairs, a lot of underutilized parking area. The north end of the, oh, sorry, excuse me, the west end of the Rolling Meadows Shopping Center generally has similar conditions, very low utilization. Maya, again, similar. So those, those impacts are quite, quite notable, quite obvious, and you can, you can see them most of the time when you drive past. The impacts to smaller and medium firms on their parking is a little more nebulous, a little bit more difficult to see, because you do tend to see smaller lots and it seems like there's a bit more utilization happening in those parking lots. But what we've, we tend to find, and we have a lot of conversations with prospective businesses in the city, is that they may be deterred by not being able to meet our parking requirements. And so you can see Plum Grove Shopping Center there is basically kind of at the maximum. We could maybe squeeze in one more small restaurant. It'd be maybe just over the line in terms of the shared parking number that would be required of all of them. Were we to get two restaurants, that second restaurant would have to come in for a variation. So it really limits the types and the quality and the quantity of certain businesses that we can attract in town. What we tend to find is that smaller businesses are much less inclined to want to go through a variation hearing. So it limits the investment development on constrained properties. And constrained lots are therefore more likely to attract lower value or less active uses. Variation applications may also require traffic studies, which can be a very costly and very time-consuming venture, particularly for those small and medium businesses for which startup capital, startup labor is much more acutely felt. So with regards to variations in the city over the last five years, there have been 10, which represents a total of 294 parking spaces that were essentially deemed to be not necessary for these businesses. Variations typically take two to three months. Again, like I said, it's quite a bit of, quite a bit of capital, quite a bit of time, and quite a bit of risk for particularly small and, you know, small startup businesses. It's also an opportunity cost for these businesses, and we'll keep coming back to this, this notion of opportunity cost. This is an interesting quote from the application from ATS for their parking variation hearing, where essentially they said, you know, we like doing business in Rolling Meadows, we love it here. If we can't get a parking variation, we're going back to Ohio. Which would be a, you know, a really negative outcome for the city. So in terms of the economic development impacts broadly, the estimate range for the price of a single parking space, somewhere between $1,000 and $5,000 for private developers. This is excluding the landscape and ongoing maintenance costs. The lifetime costs are likely to be much higher, I've seen estimates ranging from $30,000 to $50,000 per parking space, dependent on the type of infrastructure going in. So using one example, the 3705 Fessin Drive, that's the Rolling Meadows Park District, they received a variation of 72 parking spaces. This is an estimated saving of $295,000 in development costs that they would have incurred had they have been obligated to build up to our, our minimum parking requirements. Overall, that would yield a $1.2 million parking facility. So the hidden costs are kind of quite broad, you know, there's, it hurts the ability, the city's ability to attract new businesses. It can burden smaller businesses and it can burden larger businesses as well. And essentially creates a disincentive. The maintenance and installation costs, as I just described, can be, you know, our estimate is $4,000 per parking space, that's pretty, a pretty consistent figure across the Chicago metropolitan area. And, you know, unnecessary parking spaces are therefore a substantial unnecessary cost. And then there's the opportunity cost. So we are looking at land, we have five square miles in the city. And we are, we have to treat land as a scarce resource to be valued and utilized to its fullest. So underutilized land represents lost investment in businesses and housing development, the associated revenue, and ultimately, it's a loss of value and sense of place. So staff are aiming to bring in a text amendment that would create three primary changes to the existing code language. It would retain a parking minimum of one parking space per residential dwelling. It would retain a parking minimum of one parking space per residential dwelling unit, which means that's appropriate, given the, uh, lack of, of public transit in the ci, in the city. And then, where we have a table of, uh, our land use categories, um, that were, and it says "required," we would just change this one word to a non-binding "recommended." So, the third condition would be that we'd then create a framework where we can, um, work, work with higher impact developments, particularly assembly uses, PUDs, this kind of thing that do generate significantly more parking and, and at less regular times. Um, we would ensure that they, uh, provide substantial conformity to regulation, uh, to the recommendations. This is usually done through a traffic study, and again, that's, that would be generally part of, uh, a special use or a PUD process for those, uh, higher impacted and larger developments, anyway. Um, and one more note, so, just in terms of context of other communities that might, may have done something similar, we have, uh, there's, there's quite a lot of resource out there. About a hundred and fifty cities or communities across the country have eradicated, or, um, basically deleted their parking requirements entirely. Some have gone as far as to implement maximum parking ratio requirements, so most of the maximums I've seen have been lower than our minimums, but, um, we don't think that's an appropriate route for this, this policy change. But, um, we would like your direction on this topic and any comments or questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff this evening? Yes, Alderman Budmats and Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I have a real problem with number two on your text amendment proposal. Um, asking people or telling people that what, that you're giving recommend the amount of parking and not have a minimum required, to me, sounds like, oh, I'll do what I want, rather than what's reasonable. And so, if you wanted to lower the required amount and then, and then create a recommended amount for them to consider as well, um, that, that's great. But I, I think just moving to recommend it only would cause, would cause more problems than it would solve. Um, and then, other than that, I can see remaining one in three the way they are.
Staff, did you have any, um, additional information you'd like to provide for that comment?
Yeah, so, I guess there are a few moving parts to this, um, to this comment. So, the recommendations as they are, are, you know, again, they're informed by a methodology and then iterated through, through, you know, code adoptions over time. It would be, I'm not saying impossible, but potentially impractical and not necessarily fruitful to, um, to revise these numbers based on, based on a hunch, um, where in fact, we may have less, uh, rela, you know, less reliable data about each land use, um, than the source material itself. That said, the source material is, you know, not necessarily yielding productive land uses in the city, so, you know, I guess it would be, um, would be aiming to filter it more through a developer-led, market-led approach, where essentially developers and, and businesses tend to have a very good grasp on how much parking they would require, how much is going to be used, um, for their uses. So, you know, certainly a balancing act.
Alderman O'Brien?
Um, thank you. No, I'm in support of the, I am really glad to see column three, because that was just one of my questions, was that if something big does pop up, where are people going to go? They're going to flow into the residential area. I'm just thinking Jewel here, because it's the third ward. Fortunately, we're not in that situation, but just larger developments, that we have something that those would be scrutinized more, so we wouldn't end up parking problems on residential streets. So, I'm in support, and I appreciate item three.
Certainly. And, you know, one thing I can add as well, um, this approach where it's been done across the country is not yielded, generally not yielded insufficient parking. It's about rightsizing parking. Um, it's about, you know, developers and the market, really understanding their markets and understanding the demand on their markets and supplying for that and using that land efficiently. So, this isn't a tirade to try to eradicate parking lots, it's to create the right size of parking lots and, and let the market be the guide for that.
Thank you. Yes, I'm set.
Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Assistant City Manager Kohl talked about bad statistics. Our squared values of point oh three, meaning you've got no correlation, so.
That's correct.
So, um, and that does, such, it's such bad statistics that it does inform you that the market-informed parking approach is where you want to go, I believe.
That's correct.
So, I think, I like that concept, that, but that requires you to trust your developers in some sense, correct?
Yeah, trust and work with. Hopefully, they trust our professional input on this, these items as well.
So, because there's such a variation in there, and there shows no correlation, I would say that I would very strongly support the market-based, um, parking recommendations coming from them. Maybe required, but I like that, that approach. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so, council, we now have some opposing, uh, opinions on item two here, that staff was requiring direction. So, at this point, I'm going to summarize that we have from Alderman Budmats, um, does not want the text amendment to read, read recommended, but to instead adjust the minimums. Is that correct? Is there anything else that I missed from, from that request?
No, we could, we could lower the minimums and, and then provide, let the market provide recommendations, but I'm looking to, I'm looking to make sure that some developer doesn't say, "Really only need five spots for the next Jewel food store." And, and we have to say, "Well, he's an expert, and, and we're going to follow his expertise." So, I'm, I'm looking at, obviously, I'm just using the worst-case scenario, but I'm just trying to say that not every, some people who are developers develop and run, some people who are developers stay in the community and, and keep building the next project. And so, I, I'm not, I'm looking to make sure that we don't get, we get the maximum benefit of a long-term relationship with a, with a developer who's going to take into account the real needs of that project, that project, even now and in the future.
So, would it be fair to ask then of staff, um, then for item three, where the, the request is to create a framework for higher impact developments, which is kind of what you were saying, worst-case scenario, a Jewel that wants five parking spots? Are you looking then for more information on what those guardrails would be? What would, so what would require, um, a, a PUD or an S, an SUP to be able to actually talk about parking?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, let's expand the requirements for number, number three is great. Let's just figure out how to make sure that that's being applied even in slightly smaller situations.
Okay. So, then, um, our question, then, I think for staff, then, to clarify, what, when this presentation was being put together, what was envisioned as the difference between two and three? And I understand that you have SUP night, you have PUD here, but for the council and for residents to be able to understand that difference, um, can, can you give us, uh, can, can you give us a, um, an example of that framework?
Certainly. So, um, a planned development is, is a, typically a much larger, uh, development, might include certain, you know, um, large commercial or residential uses and, and may, uh, have higher parking or traffic demands based on, based on that, that land use. They would, in order to establish that PUD, they would need to conduct a traffic study, which would, uh, provide substantial conformity to, to the parking recommendations. The reason we would leave those recommendations as they are is to, is to ensure that these larger developments would adhere to those, those, those numbers or as close, as close to they can. Uh, special uses, um, so, most of the, I guess, more intensive land uses in, in the city, uh, such as assembly uses, this could be, um, you know, a, a church or gathering place, or, uh, you know, potentially, um, large, large indoor recreation facilities that might have high traffic demands on game days, for instance, they would have to go through the special use process, which would be adjudicated by the Planning Zoning Commission and would need to, uh, essentially provide evidence that they would also, uh, conform to those, those land, uh, those, those recommended minimums. Similarly, for Jewel or Maya or another one of these, um, larger, larger supermarkets, these are both, I think, they're both in planned developments. If they were going to change anything, they'd need to go through what's called a major change to a planned development. And again, if they were making a lot, uh, large changes to their parking lot, this would have to go through a zoning as well, and they'd still need to provide some degree of conformity.
Okay. And I, I think then there are some questions then regarding that, right? Because so, one of the examples we had was like the Meyer parking lot with very few parking spots that were utilized. So, and if that's something, for the council to understand, I think how we're understanding this is keep your minimum parking recommendations and actually have plan, or having your PUDs adhere to those, in which case we would maybe get another Meyer in that situation. How, how are we misunderstanding that?
Well, necessarily, if they provided a traffic study and, and different land use, um, arrangements, you know, if there was, you know, an outlot development or something, and they could provide evidence in the form of a traffic study that, you know, said that as, as that set, the site plan is proposed, that it would have enough parking, um, and we believe that that is sufficient, then it would be sufficient. It may, that may in fact be less than those recommended numbers. Uh, nonetheless, it would go through, um, this fact-finding process.
I see. So, then, it, for Alderman Budmats' concern, um, we are essentially not just saying, "Follow what's in the code." We're also stating, "You actually have to invest to be able to show us, the city, what kind of parking is going to support the development that you're going to put in here."
Yeah. Certainly for larger, for larger developments.
Okay. Um, and then for the, the smaller developments, what would, what is a, um, it sounds like you, you're requesting even more guardrails for those smaller developments as well.
Right. So, the smaller, I'm not as concerned about number three, the larger ones. I'm worried about number two. So, I'll, let's just say, somebody wants to redevelop the old firehouse. I'm, I'm looking to see how we avoid having cars go all the way down the street who are going to be, who are going to be at that restaurant if it becomes a restaurant, so that the parking is really located at or near the facility being used. And if we recommend, you know, ten spots and they really only put in six, that means that somebody's going to be parking in the church parking lot down the street when they want to use that restaurant. So, that's, that's my, that's my real worry about changing the word "required" to recommend it.
Yeah, I guess, you know, if you look at the existing conditions there at the moment, we, we, we already have a restaurant that is, um, utilizing shared parking, uh, at neighboring properties. We can't require more than what the code says we require, um, you know, and, uh, we've had developers who have been interested in the firehouse say that, you know, ultimately, they would want to build a parking lot in the, in the empty green space to, to la, to the, uh, to the south of the, of the property. So, you know, and essentially, these are market-informed decisions. They understand that, that they will need parking for their site, and that it would be an asset for that business. Typically, what you, you know, developers tend not to, uh, design that kind of redundancy to their building, oh, sorry, not redundancy, but, um, they don't tend to design buildings that won't be supported by the, by the, you know, amenities around them. So, parking is, is vital to them, and they generally understand that.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm getting a little over my skis here, but is it possible, like for item three, and it might already be built into the sub or the PUD process, I was just jotting, like, percent of lot size, like, could a trigger be anything that's part, like sixty percent of the existing lot is going to be taken up by this new entity or this new building? That that would trigger it, or that overall square footage? Any development that's over sixty thousand square feet, and this is where all the further staff's expertise on, is that if it's above sixty thousand, it automatically triggers that framework? I don't know. Or a lot size is that if it's going to occupy more than seventy percent of the lot size, it's got to trigger this regardless of what type of entity it is? I didn't know if that would be some triggers that my peers might be comfortable with.
Certainly. I think that could be something we could look into.
Yeah. I would just, to, to emphasize one of Mr. Savage's points, and when we're talking about item number three up here, we're really talking categories of land use, right? So, if you have an assembly space, it might be one thousand square feet, it might be a hundred thousand. It has to go through this process, and one of the standards it has to meet is, are there adequate public facilities, you know, including parking, right? Um, part of what we want to do by three here is, we don't want to fall into a trap where, um, we've taken out the, the actual language in the code of what we want for parking, and then we come in and everyone has a number in their heads that they're looking for, and we, we make something up. Um, that, that's a lot of what three's trying to speak to. Uh, to your point, for larger developments, can we look at a, a way, a process to, to work through these? I think we could. That would be a little less orthodox, but we could, I think we could find some options there. Um, Alderman Budmats, if I could, Madam Mayor, I did want to return briefly to your comments, um, which I think are valid. There's no such thing as a, a perfect policy position, right? I mean, there, there's always going to be some set of trade-offs. Um, we know the trade-offs of, of the, of the approach we have, which is many, broadly speaking, right, may developments will provide more parking than they really need to ensure that there's always a little bit of parking available, and some potential uses won't try to get less. They'll just look for a site that they think works for them. When we, you know, switch this position, when we switch this posture, certainly, we're going into a land of unknowns. It's not total unknown. We're not the first to, to do this, but it is much less, fewer guardrails, as you said. Um, I mean, what we're relying on here, I, I know developers, you know, talking about the reputation of developers is like talking about your best friend lobbyist or whatever. They don't have a great reputation, but, um, certainly, getting this parking number right is a lot more in their interest than a lot of other things. Um, you know, in private real estate, they have, I mean, they have real expectations about the amount of parking they can get. Um, if they don't have enough parking, you know, they're, they bleed tenants. They, um, they can't sell to a real estate investment trust or to the next operator. Um, they, you know, without being overly dramatic, they commit economic suicide, right? And that's a bit of what we are, um, what we're hoping for in, you know, that, that folks are rational market folks, and developers are really good at that. Um, but, but to your point, I mean, if you look at, you know, this list of option, you know, we went through in, in a longer form memo, there's a list of all these variations we've handed out. One of those is Legion Football Club, which is up for public hearing right now. So, good news, they'd be in a public hearing either way. This would come out either way. They probably have a parking problem right now. They probably don't have enough on-site, and it, it's causing some rollover effects. Um, any policy is going to spin off bad cases like that. Um, our, our recommendation here is just trying to balance which would be the best for the city, knowing, among other things, the sites we're working with, um, our competitive position in the metro, and, um, you know, what our opportunities are in a, you know, a landlocked, um, environment.
So, any other comments or questions for staff? Okay. So, what I'm hearing from council then is that we will need some more information on what two and three would look like, and which use cases would be included and which use cases wouldn't be included. Um, and, uh, and I, unless we have, um, unless, and, I, I will put that forth with a straw pole first before we do that, but that was what I would put forth here for the council, is that we would ask staff to provide just some use cases, so we understand what falls into three, what falls into, what wouldn't fall into three, really, what would be excluded, what would we let the market then decide and not have as a hand-holding of a process or as much collaboration. Um, is there, who in, on the council would be in favor of receiving that information before making a decision on this? Okay, so you've got five and, oh, six?
Oh, yeah, I'm comfortable at doing it at the same time. Like, if it's part of the, a packet for us to review in August or September, whenever it comes, I think as long as that's there, I would be comfortable in deciding then versus needing to take another committee to the whole, and then it's another meeting later. But that's my perspective. I would like the data, but I'm comfortable as it just being part of the packet we review. I'm fine with that. Although, we need another discussion, that's just.
Okay. And I've heard from Alderman Kohler, who stated this is fine, please move forward, this, this makes sense, this is better than what we have now. So, then I'll ask Alderman Budmats, are you comfortable with having use cases to show what would fall, what would be in three and controlled and what wouldn't be as part of the staff write-up when this comes as a text amendment, um, for review?
Yeah, and I'm not shy about calling and, and asking questions when, when, when the time occurs.
Okay. Then you have your direction. Um, we're looking forward to the text amendment with use cases that can better align, um, what the city is expecting of, uh, of its businesses and other structures and their parking minimums. what the city is expecting of its businesses and other structures and their parking minimums.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, there are no signatories on the sign in sheet for the committee of the whole. Therefore, I will adjourn the committee of the whole at 8:36 PM. All those, we need a, we need a motion to adjourn for the committee of the whole.
So moved.
There were no signatories on the sign in sheet. Yep. Just checking with my parliamentarian for the committee of the whole. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Budmats for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have and the meeting is adjourned at 8:37 PM. We will take a five minute break before beginning our city council meeting. Thank you.
I heard from the same resident twice over the weekend about the situation at the park. So if we could just maybe have some increased presence at dusk, the report was it happens usually between five and eight. If we could have some increased police go through on Waverly Park, she's just concerned about the safety of children who might be playing in and around the park compared to the speed of an e-bike or an ATV.
We'll make sure to do that. Yeah, after you and I had spoken, I did let Chief Nowacki know and so our officers are aware of the issue. In addition to that, just it's included as a draft item in the agenda. We're going to be bringing in August recommended regulations of e-bikes within the city as well. So that should address a component of the complaint.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Are there any other ward reports this evening? All right. Hearing none. We do have two signatories on the sign in sheet this evening. Thank you for your patience and for attending the committee of the whole prior. In order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials and to guarantee to the elected officials an order and dignified form in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the city council. Per rules of procedure, the public is to address the city council and the fact that no member of the city council responds does not mean that the city council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who seeks to address the city council at this time for public comment shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. First, each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the city council. Questions and or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officers present. Discussions shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect and profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. With that, the first signatory on the sign in sheet is Lynn Greysmeyer?
So I read in a local newspaper that Rolling Meadows recently bought the upper floors of the building adjacent to the East Park Apartments. Their cost plus renovations exceeded about $100.1 million yet. I did not see this information appear in the Rolling Meadows News and Views and I'm wondering why that was not in there. That is a very important topic for residents to know where their tax money goes when such a huge acquisition is made. And then also the News and the Views for a springish type edition. I did not recall that there was any reference made to the city of Rolling Meadows offering internships for summer students, either summertime or a little bit longer. So that I see as a missed opportunity for age appropriate students in Rolling Meadows. And the News and Views Transportation Section spoke about the new town center district does not impact any proposed future reconfiguration of Kerchoff Road. And I believe that that statement should have been that the Transportation Section should have read to be there would be no Kerchoff Road diminishing of the traffic lanes in continuum rather than just put it in future. And if Kerchoff Road is diminished, the mayor's statements of June to the TV media would be nullified because, excuse me, Rolling Meadows would not be a welcoming community partner for the Chicago Bears. And Kerchoff Road is the hub for Rolling Meadows and any reduction of it will bring a loss for businesses, residents, area community shoppers and commuters, those who rely on access to Route 53 Expressway and event goers because the hub will be a bottleneck ensuring impatience, frequent horn blowing and perhaps road rage. And I am expecting that Kerchoff's Road new name will be Congestion Kerchoff Road if it becomes two lanes for traffic. And one other last comment about the presentation regarding the parking, where it was stated that there will be only one parking space per residence. I do not think that that is sufficient. There are so many people that need to have two incomes per residence and they all need to have vehicles to be able to get to their employers. The cost of living, taxes and fees, along with not having an adequate space to have their parking for their vehicles would be a huge problem for residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next signatory on the sign in sheet is Ms. Betty Anderson.
I had a very kind neighbor who knows I don't have a computer. So she ran off this libel note. And this is page 83 from this Kerchoff Road corridor study. Telling the story, encouraging economic development and new construction in the Kerchoff Road corridor will take more than progressive zoning regulations, a new overlay district and design guidelines. The city must be prepared to share the story of the town center and the city's vision for this district. The development community needs a clear picture of the market potential and the likelihood of success before making an investment in the corridor. This could mean producing focused marketing materials for key development sites and making it available on the city's website and maintaining strong lines of communication with important property owners like the Houses of Worship and the Shopping Center. Real estate brokers are often the first points of contact for interested parties. So the story and the vision for Kerchoff should be shared with this community. This planning study is an important part of it, but considerations should be given to the granular information the development community will need to know about Rolling Meadows and the Kerchoff Road corridor and preparing the story to share. Okay. This was excellent advice given by the company, but unfortunately it was completely ignored by the council, leaving quite a number of residents still unaware of their plans. I was amused at the description in the newsletter regarding feedback received during an extensive year-long effort. during an extensive year-long effort to engage residents, business owners, and stakeholders. Engaging 300 residents for their opinion can hardly be considered extensive with the amount of the remaining residents who were not engaged. I would suggest calling it microscopic rather than extensive. I would suggest a more business-like message, for example, a letter explaining your proposals in the future. 300 against thousands, not as the company had in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other signatories on the sign-in sheet. At this time, we'll move on to our ordinances. For item A, we have a request for the waiver of first reading. And is there a, is there a motion to waive first reading for item A? Yes, Alderman Bud Matts for the first and Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the waiver of first reading for item A? Okay, and item A is ordinance number 25-40, grant a special use permit for a public recreation facility for the Grove for 4801 Old Plum Grove Road.
I have discussions, I didn't know if we heard.
I see, thank you, yes, okay. So we have the first and we have the second. Is there any discussion? Alderman McHale.
Yes, I am thrilled that we are going to possibly be adding a playground, another one over on West of 53 over in our area over there as we only have one. However, I am concerned about mobility over there in that area with the junior high being across the street and there not being a safe way to cross from, I take that back. There is a safe way to cross at the light, however, nobody ever goes to the light. So I just want us to be aware of that situation and as this moves forward when we're looking at the opportunity for grants and things like that to get a sidewalk over there to help make it a little bit safer for students from the junior high to get across the street to the Grove and even for the playground. But also in my experience, just from dropping my own kids off at the school, it gets very muddy over there with where parents are dropping children off. They might drop them off in the Grove parking lot to which they jet across the street because they won't go to the light over on Meacham. So I just want us to be aware of that and maybe look into that a little bit and work this into the plan going forward. But I'm thrilled to have this recreation facility coming over by us.
Okay, so then are there any other questions or motions that you're making on this item?
I discussed this with, with city staff and they're going to look into the possibility of sidewalk mobility and safety and crosswalk.
I see, thank you for, thank you for that update. Yes, Alderman Bud Matts.
If I may piggyback onto that further, the, there's a real lack of sidewalks on Plum Grove, Old Plum Grove Road there. So I see kids walking in the street to get to school in the morning from, if you watch from the, basically from the entry point into Rolling Meadows at the bridge all the way up to the, up to the junior high, there's very little sidewalk there. So any future repairs to, or resurfacing, repairs to the roadway? We should consider looking at the sidewalks there as well along Old Plum Grove so that for the safety of the students going to the high school, or the junior high school or now, it's not a junior high school, middle school, saying, thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments regarding this item? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Do we vote on waiving the first reading?
We're at discussion for the waiver of the first reading. Did you have any question other than?
No, it sounds like we were discussing the ordinance itself, not the waiver.
Getting a jump on it.
Yeah, so because this is regarding item A and the expediency or the topic itself, then I believe the content is covered for both the discussion of the waiver of the first reading and the adoption of the ordinance. But I'm looking to the parliamentarian that we have.
You're correct.
Okay, so we're clear. Any other questions or comments regarding the ordinance or the waiver of the first reading? Okay, then with that, will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With three in favor and one opposed, this ordinance will move forward for second reading, which brings us back to approve it. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the approval of this ordinance? Okay, hearing none, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This now brings us to new business. We have a motion to ratify payment of bills on warrant for July 8, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the ratification of the payment of bills on warrant for July 8? Okay, hearing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the, will, shall the warrant be ratified? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is ratified. This brings us to item C, a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for July 22, 2025. Is there a motion to approve this warrant? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the approval of the payment of bills on warrant for July 22, 2025? Hearing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us to our consent resolutions, which consist of only two items this evening, items D through E. Does any older person wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Alright, hearing none, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider the two resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Boucher for the second. This consists of item D, resolution number 25-R-66, which is to authorize the purchase of a 2025 Ford Transit mobile crime scene vehicle from standard equipment in a not-to-exceed amount of $192,493 and no cents. And item E, resolution number 25-R-67, to approve an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the Joint Emergency Management System, GEMS. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This brings us to other business and reports. There is no mayoral appointment or proclamation or city clerk's report, which now brings us to our city staff reports. For our community, for our community items of interest, I defer to City Manager Rob Salvo.
Thank you Mayor. The city's bites and beats on Kirchhoff music and food truck events take place tomorrow, June 23, on the grounds of Community Church at 2720 Kirchhoff Road. Held on the fourth Wednesday evening of each month through September, grab a bite from an array of food trucks while tuning into a blend of eclectic musicians. We look forward to seeing everyone there tomorrow evening. A special note on this occasion is to bring water and umbrella and a fan because it will be hot out tomorrow. So please do stay cool during the event. Come on out and spend an evening with the Rolling Meadows Police Department on Tuesday, August 5, at the annual National Night Out event being held at the Community Center at 3705 Pheasant Drive. This year's highlights include music, games, public safety vehicles, and food samples. New this year is a kids' costume contest, dresses your favorite first responder. National Night Out is a family-friendly event that brings law enforcement and the community together across the nation. For more information, visit the city's website at cityrm.org. That's it for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. For our June 2025 new business report, I will defer to our Business Development Manager, Martha Corner.
Thank you Mayor, I'm pleased to announce three new businesses for the month of June, two contractors and also a new retailer, Tenderheart Vintage Restail Shop located at 3409 Kirchhoff Road.
Thank you. The August 26, 2025 Committee of the Whole and City Council draft agendas are in the packet. If the City Council or the public has any questions regarding agendas, please contact City Manager Rob Salvo. Again, we are on the summer schedule, which means that we include both the Committee of the Whole and the City Council meeting on the same day where we meet once per month and that will take place again in August on the fourth Tuesday of the month. At this time, are there any matters not on the agenda this evening that the council would wish to discuss? Yes, Alderman Boucher.
Just a couple of things really, really quick. There is a back-to-school supply drive with boxes down at, here at City Hall and I believe at the library as well. So Human Services Department is looking for new school supplies to help supply our students here within the city of Rolling Meadows for back-to-school. I'd also like to address that we did not purchase a building for $100.4 million, but for $1.4 million and that we had grant money from Senator Walker and from Representative Grassi to cover those costs so that it does not come to a cost of the residents, but a cost of the state. And that is why we were able to go ahead and do that work. So I just thought that that should be addressed, that those numbers and information was not portrayed correctly. That is also written in the Daily Herald article, if anyone wants to look that up. Also the library, so had their elections and sworn three new people and they will have their meeting, their next meeting, the second Wednesday of August.
Thank you. Yes, City Manager Rob Salvo.
One clarification, the actual purchase cost $650,000. $1.5 million was awarded through a state grant to help offset the purchase cost as well as the build-out. We're still haven't closed on the purchase. We approved a purchase and sale contract, so we're working towards closing. But the amount that the city has paid through grant funding is 650, so.
Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, Alderman Bud Matts.
So it's not even close to 100.1 million?
No.
Okay, good.
Okay, if there are no other matters that are not on the agenda this evening, I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session under Section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act Regarding Personnel and under Section 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act Regarding the Purchase or Lease of Property and under Section 2C6 of the Open Meetings Act Regarding Setting Price for Sale or Lease of Property. With that, do I have a motion? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding going into closed session this evening? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience impressed or advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. Thank you.